Hey, everyone. We have Rob Swayze that is up here to provide some education and training for us. After he does a public portion of the presentation, we will go into camera and answer, ask any questions in camera. There's not going to be any motions coming out of the in-camera portion. So just to let you know that in the audience, and we'll turn it over to Mr. Swayze. Thank you for having me.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor and Mr. Counsel. Pleased to meet all of you, and thank you for having me. I understand there's one member of council who's the first-year councillor. Who would that be?
We actually have two, what one is.
Okay. All right. So anyway, hopefully, when I'm through with this, and I'm going to be about an hour, and feel free to interrupt me at any time and ask questions if you want. But hopefully, when I'm finished with this, you'll be satisfied that the code of conduct, me as the integrity commissioner, won't interfere in any way with you doing your job as councillor. As a councillor. I'm going to take you through, you're sort of between codes of conduct, right? You have an old one that doesn't comply with Bill 68, and it needs revision, and your staff and I are talking about that, and I can give them any kind of a sample code to staff to look at, and that will unfold, I guess. But most codes of conduct are pretty much the same in terms of the rules that are contained. There's about seven of them. I'm going to take you through all of those seven. And some of them, I'm very strict on, some of them I am not so strict on, and some of the principles that are in the code, I leave to the electorate. I don't deal with them. I'll explain to you where that all falls into place as we go through. So some of these principles are sort of rules that I apply certainly, but I need a real, I need a real reach of a rule for me to investigate, and I'm going to start an investigation on some principle. I'll explain all that. Then I'm going to get into the procedural sections. Now, they're mostly the procedural sections in my sample code, but your existing code has a complete protocol or is similar. They're all pretty similar. But I'm not talking about the wording of any codes here. I'm talking about concepts. I want you to understand the way I think, because I'm the one who enforces your code of conduct, and you want to know what I think. All right? And then we're going to get into some new jurisdictions for the integrity commissioners, and that's the municipal code, sorry, the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, which we'll end up with that. Now, I've been doing this for 11 years, and I'm going to give you a lot of examples. I'm not going to just talk about concepts. I'm going to give you actual examples that I've been through over these 11 years since I've been an integrity commissioner. I started with Oakville in 2008, and I've got more than 40 municipalities off and on as integrity commissioners. So I've been doing this a long time. Now, let me start by saying that I have the greatest of respect for members of councillor, and the mayor, who are giving back to your community, are doing the public service. I think it's wonderful what you're doing, and it's very important, your job. If anybody criticizes councillors in front of me, I say to them, imagine giving your phone number to several thousand people and saying, if you have a problem, call me. I wouldn't do that, but you have, and I respect that. Now, I want to talk about the expected level of activity. I was amazed at how you have been through complaints already, and your code of conduct, lengthy report from an integrity commissioner, and I was amazed, because I currently have 34 clients, and I never hear from them. I mean, there's very little activity as an integrity commissioner for most municipalities. So hopefully, that's going to be the case now. Now, you never know where the active clients are. I mean, I was in Mississauga as an integrity commissioner for five years, 700,000 people. And that was an active client in 19, sorry, 2016, and then 2017, my most active client was Wasaga Beach. And then 2018, my most active client was Prince Edward County. This is a state with no population, but they have 14 councillors, so they seem to have some disputes here and there. I, one mayor in Western Ontario was quoted in his local newspaper. He said, I hear this Mr. Swayze is a nice guy. I hope I never meet him. And I still haven't met him, and I still haven't sent that municipality a bill, so that's, and the reason, the reason that there's not a lot of activity is because I don't read your newspaper and react to things you say or do. I don't patrol. I'm complaints-driven only, so I need a complaint from somebody. And if the complaint isn't valid on its face, it gets dismissed if I had complaints to put the dog catcher. I don't have any jurisdiction over staff at all. I just have jurisdiction over members of council. I also have a cold, which requires water. And I have to say that at least 50% of the complaints I receive are dismissed with a five-minute email, because there's a lot of confusion up there. People don't understand what the code of conduct is intended to do. There's a lot of political motivation. People are being critical on a political basis, and if they show that on the face of the complaint, then I may ask a few questions, I may talk to a few people, but I don't spend any time on it, because, but I am strict on some of the rules, and we'll get into that. So I think, hopefully, you pick me. So I guess my reputation is that I'm very reasonable always, and I try to be practical. I try to use common sense in my decisions, not overly strict in the law. Now, this caricature of me on the screen is, you might think of, because I bring that forward, that I'm sweeping up evil because I'm an integrity commissioner, isn't that wonderful? This was done by a lady in Niagara Falls area, who was part of an entourage of a councillor who was completely out of control. And what she's purveying, what she's trying to show there is me sweeping up the last that I've broken, so she was not very happy with me. But I thought it was very clever her caricature, anyway. So, and again, we're going to, at the end of this, we're going to get into the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, which is always a concern to you. Formerly, if you had a problem with that and you wanted to get some legal advice, you'll find out that the town solicitor can't advise you. You have to get your own legal advice. And now that you have an integrity commissioner, I have the power to give you advice on the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. So send me an email anytime you want advice, either on the code of conduct or on the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. And I'll be very, very happy to respond. The Bill 68, the new modernization act, requires that you ask advice in writing. You can't do it on the phone. If you call me, what happens is, we talk, and I take your call, I do give you some verbal advice, but I tell you, you can't accept it. I'm not going to send you anything in writing until you send me an email first requesting my advice, and then I'll send you an email, and you can rely on that email, because the advice is bland and gummy. Now, I always start with the one problem that causes councillors all sorts of, from stress and problems. And it's a concept that councillor in a municipality is all-powerful, 100% powerful, all right? But you, as an individual councillor, have one vote. You can't, you have no power whatsoever, and it includes the mayor. You have one vote, so you can't order, not by yourself, you can't order staff around. As a majority of council, you can order staff around. You can tell them to do whatever you want. So this is a concept that I've seen a lot of councillors get in trouble with. Wait a minute, I just got elected, I went through an election, I got elected to a very powerful body, doesn't that mean I'm powerful? Well, I'm here to tell you, no. You, in fact, have one vote, and I'm going to give you some examples of where this has gone wrong, both ways. A good example is, you're a, you're a new councillor. You feel very strongly that one department should change one thing that they're doing. And you feel so strongly about it that you, you make it part of your campaign. You put it in your campaign material, and I'm going to get this done for you. And so you get elected, and you, the first thing you do is you go to the department head of that department, and you say, I think you should change doing this to this. And the department head might say, or will say, I don't think I should do that because of this, this, and this. And you go through this debate, and finally, you get a little upset, and you say, well, look, I made this part of my campaign. I'm the people talking. The people are saying they want this. And it's always inevitable, what the department head does is, he says, well, okay, okay, well, we'll do an report to council. And of course, the report trashes your idea completely. Councillor turns it down, and you're unhappy. Don't do that. Don't be unhappy, because all you have to do is talk, what are you, seven members on council?
Yes.
Four people, that's all you need, and you can do, you're all-powerful, as long as you can have four people on your side. But don't talk to them separately, because that's against the close meeting rules. Be careful of that, you can get caught on that. Don't send emails to all, all four, to four councillors suggesting that we vote in such a way, because that's contrary to the municipal, to the municipal act. So the energy that you use in trying to get something done, you should use in persuading your fellow councillors that this is the way it should be done. Don't start yelling at staff. And if you want to, if you want to be critical of staff, that's allowed, but don't do it publicly. Don't do it in a public meeting. Go in their office, close the door, and have a chat about what you think is wrong. Preferably, you don't want to be having a problem with, you shouldn't go to lower line staff. You don't yell at the crossing guard. Go to Cynthia, or at least to supervisors, so that you have some experience and understanding, and a senior person should be the one that you talk to. A municipality is a very complicated corporation to run. I don't care how small it is or how big it is, it's very complicated. Certainly politically, it's very complicated. Imagine if a municipality had a cabinet. A cabinet is a leader, and everybody appointed by the leader loyal to the cabinet. Imagine how easy it would be to get an agreement from a group like that instead of a group that is disparate, and had been elected by, you know, different people all over the place. So it's a very, very difficult municipality to run. And it's important to be managed by professionals who have experience. They get hired because of experience. The fact that you got elected doesn't give you any, it doesn't guarantee that you have any experience at all in running a municipality. I'll get more into this when we get to staff relations. Any, any questions or anything at this point? I mean, if you don't, like, if you don't agree with me, tell me.
One of the things in your time vote is, to get something done, you have to go, basically, get four councillors on your side, and seven. But are we, we're not allowed to go and talk to four other people, though, are we?
You can talk to one.
But I can't go to, like, so say on this council, I couldn't go to Bill, and I can, and then have a, and my, I didn't think.
Yes, you can. As long as you don't have a meeting. It's as close as a meeting, probably, that the municipal.
Do you believe you were allowed to talk to more? I do believe that you're allowed to talk to more one-on-one, because what if that becomes a serial meeting?
You can't talk to a quorum, but you can talk to one or two.
Yeah, like the one or two, but I could not go and poll every single person and try and persuade every single person.
I think you could poll, but you can't do it as a meeting of a quorum of council.
Right. I understand that.
She's talking about serial talking.
I'm talking about like a serial meeting, where I went to Bill, kind of convinced him, and then went to the next person, convinced him, but I couldn't do that with every single member of the council. I thought I had to still keep that under quorum.
It's a question of being, doing it all at once, in my, in my opinion. That's what the, you can't have a meeting, a closed, a meeting, a secret meeting.
Right.
Having a, you can have a secret meeting with one or two, but you can't have a secret meeting with three or four, or five, because that's a quorum of council. And you're trying to make a decision, trying to get a decision made all at once.
Right, but if I went to people serially, so I went to two people, and it was less, you don't think there's any more to that?
No, I don't. My opinion, sir.
Yeah, well, that's what the mayor's saying is what we were trained with, is called, it's deemed serial talking. We were trained a number of times on that, that we could maybe talk to two people only, when you couldn't, wouldn't exert an effort while in council. It'd be the same as having a closed meeting. That's how, that's what we were trained as, that's why she's saying.
I don't agree with her.
This is true, but we'll just add to that. We were never told that we couldn't talk to one, then the other, then the other. We weren't told like that. We were told that you couldn't serial talk, or you couldn't talk to a quorum. But the way you just said it, it feels like the training we got with a twist, though. It's like.
No, I understand, I understand. But I don't agree. I think that you can express your views, you can have coffee with a councillor, and have coffee with another councillor, as long as you do it separately. It's when you, it's when you get together, together, and you decide, the four of you, that this is the way it's going to be, or if you send an email to four, that's, you know, combining it all and saying, I think the councillors should vote this way, you shouldn't do that. But I don't see anything wrong with one councillor telling you to do another. I disagree with, now, there's never been a case of it, that I know of.
There hasn't?
Well, there's lots of cases where there've been, you know, meetings, of quorums, and there's been a case on this email where, I know about that case, but I've never heard of a case where you individually talked to, you know, separate councillors. I don't know of any case like that.
That is a twist, I mean.
But there you go. See, that's complicated, sir.
And that might make a difference, too, if you turn around and, let's say the council meets tomorrow, and I meet Ken today at 7:00, and Ray at 8:00, and Maureen at 9:00, okay, and we just, for example, and we have a meeting tomorrow. That may be a little viewed on a little differently than if I, we had an issue, and I talked to Ken about it a month ago, and two weeks later, I happened to run into Ray, and we have a little discussion about the same issue.
I think that's part of being a councillor, trying to convince your, but, but just be careful about trying, you know, having a strategy where you're going to put four folks together. That's, I think that's the problem. But I've never seen a case where somebody, they had separate conversations all around. I've never seen a case finding somebody reaching the municipal.
That's really interesting, I mean.
But I'm going to look at it.
Please do. Would you send us something on?
I will. I'll send, I'll send Paula, I'll send Paula a note, because I'd like to look at all the cases with this in mind. It's a very good question.
As you keep going, are you going to get into the emails and what we're allowed to send to one another, or to a group first, so it's like, you know?
I'm going to get into social media, email, and emails are sort of the same.
Well, minus the social media, I'm not really on there, so I don't associate with that. But I'm talking about just emails, like interdepartmental, that it, emails?
You can't do anything, you can't disclose anything that's, excuse me, that's confidential.
No, 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 I'm not talking about anything of that nature. Just getting a message across, like, when I say a message, I'm not talking about a plan or anything of that nature, just an email, oh, something came out on the street, you heard about it, boom, you sent it to others. You're not discussing it.
You're notifying, you're notifying somebody.
Just information.
You're notifying something like a fact.
That's right.
Persuading them into voting somewhere.
There's no persuasion there whatsoever. Okay. I couldn't find anything on it.
No, of course, but.
No, no, I couldn't find anything on it either, so.
Okay, can I go on?
Yeah.
I will, I will get back to Paula, I'm not sure about you now. Now, I'm going to give you two examples of this. Council is all-powerful, but a councillor has no power except one vote. Worst, one of the most significant reports that I've written relates to a mayor who completely ran the show of a municipality. I mean, ran it. The string of CAOs that had to get away with this for many years, he would do labor negotiations on his own, without the CAO sometimes. He, the agenda for each meeting for council was given to him first, not at the same time to all members of council, it was given to him. He would call staff members in and have them change things, and this went on until finally, three staff members resigned, senior staff members, the planning director, the clerk, the very senior clerk, the recreation director, and then subsequently, the CAO resigned, the city solicitor resigned, and all by himself. And so I, of course, came down on him. I recommended that three months of his pay be suspended, and the council accepted that. And this is a quote from my report, I'm going to read it for you. "In my opinion, the rationale for the interior municipal system is that a municipality must be managed by professional managers hired for the purpose, who have the experience and education to succeed in the increased challenges facing municipalities today. However, those managers must be made to keep the values and morals of the, of the community in the forefront." Where it was mores, M-O-R-E-S.
Morals.
Somebody changed it. "Of the community in the forefront." "That this is accomplished by placing an elected council in charge. It is critical, in my view, that a majority of council, guided by recommendations from professionals, is in charge, and not an autocratic mayor without the support of council." So that was something that disturbed me very much, the way this mayor was, and obviously, council for a number of years let him get away with it as well. But he would punish that, that they, well, it was, until finally, of course, democracy failed us, and he's, he was re-elected, he's back in there, so. Now, I want to give you an example on the other side of this very important principle of council having, you know, council being all-powerful. And this is another client of mine, this is a number of years ago, and one member of council had a background in human resources. And he looked at the R chart of the municipality, and he said, you know, I think six of these positions are surplus to our needs. Four of them are vacant, and two of them are filled. He talked to a couple of the councillors, and they sort of thought that it was a good idea. He raised it in closed session, which is appropriate, and suddenly, all councillors nodding and saying, yeah, let's eliminate these six positions. And the CAO says, oh, wait a bit, I didn't know anything about this. And let me look at this, we need some of these people, let me look at this, and I'll do a report for the next meeting, I'll close meeting at the next council meeting. So he comes in with this report, and he's arguing about how vital and important they are, and you can't, you can't eliminate these positions, and you don't want to fire these two people. In effect, he refused to do what the council said. So they fired him, too. And now, it's not firing, these things happen with CAOs, but the problem was that they fired him with no intention of replacing him. So I had a complaint about it's not appropriate, if council was not appropriate, to not have a CAO. So I looked at it, I did a little investigation, I talked to the staff, and they said, well, we have meetings at staff, we rotate the chair, we, we're trying to reach consensus, and we see, we've been doing okay for the last six months. And so then, and I still feel that every group of business people need a leader, you've got to have somebody at the top. So, but I thought, how can I, how can I deal with this complaint? I can't rely on the municipal, municipal says you've got to have a treasurer, you've got to have a clerk, but you don't have to have a CAO. And staff are not, senior staff are not complaining, the six department heads are meeting, and et cetera. I even took it to our group of integrity commissioners, just without names or anything, the concept, and we all agreed, I can't do anything, because I have no power to deal with it. So I dismissed the complaint. I didn't feel good about dismissing it. Now, I did have, I did have a session with council, that same council, and I told them that any member of council, like the mayor or anybody, that tried to sit in on those staff meetings, chair them, or be involved in them, I would have come down on that council number, because that's not appropriate. There's a line between staff and council, and never, you can't cross over it. No councillor has any part to play in achieving the man of staff. And that's a critical concept that you have to have, otherwise, you're going to get yourself in trouble. If one councillor starts ordering around staff, or tries to sit in on staff meetings in the direction. So these are the, this is the legislation that all of you are impacted by, and you, it's a very complicated set of documents. Now, you need advice on all of these matters, and the staff are the experts in this area. You go, I mean, I know about the Municipal Elections Act, but go to Paula, don't come to me. I, the, the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, on the other hand, is something that you could come to me, come to me for, because they're going to have, they're going to tell you that they have a conflict, and you have to get your own lawyer. You don't have to do that anymore. The, on the code of conduct, I'm the best person to come to for advice on the code of conduct, obviously, because I enforce it. And I'm very happy to do that. You can call me, or preferably, send me an email, and so that's an advantage of having an integrity commissioner, you have an advisor. Now, the next slide, I'm going to talk about the code of conduct. And again, we're sort of in between, but your code of conduct, the current one, has principles in it, which are not rules, in my view. I apply them, there are motherhood statements, things like, public expects the highest moral and ethical standards of conduct from members that it elects, the behaviour and actions of members is expected to reflect the principles of common ability transfer, et cetera, et cetera. And key statements, a principle of underlying this code are as follows, the decision-making process of council is open, accessible, and equitable, expects the town's governance structure, public office has to reuse the personal, financial, town, residency, confidence that the conduct of each member demonstrates fairness, respect for differences, and duty to work with other members together for the common good. I'll give you an example of, in the old days, of being an integrity commissioner, where you get a, you get a, you get a complaint that says, my ward councillor won't. "My ward councillor won't talk to me, won't return my calls." And you think, well, you read these principles, and you say, "Well, yeah, councillors are supposed to respect all of the rate payers, and not returning calls, it's not showing respect, that's contrary to the code of conduct." So you send a, a copy of the complaint to the councillor, and ask for a response, usually ten days in writing, and you don't get a response in ten days, you get a phone call the same day, and the councillor says, "This guy's crazy, if I, if I return every call he, he, he rakes to me, I won't have any time to do anything for anybody else. I can't return his calls." And then you say, you're just, "Now what do I do?" I guess the councillor should be able to do that from time to time. Um, and then, then how do I deal with this complainant? Do I go back to him and say, "Your complaint is dismissed because you're crazy, can't do that." What do I do? Well, fortunately, the city of Toronto integrity commissioner had the same problem, and he got legal with it, and, um, I read it, before we conclude, the statement of principles in the code of conduct, "Not providing independent or standalone set obligations, the alleged violation of which can be the proper subject of an investigation by the integrity commission." So, it's a fancy way of really saying, leave it to the electorate. For some things, I just, I shouldn't jump into, I mean, you should be able to, uh, you know, deal with it. If you don't return many, many phone calls, you won't get elected the next time. So, um, so that's, one example is the, the return of phone calls. Another one, um, I think the annual conference was in Niagara Falls a couple of years ago, and one councillor, another client of mine, she, uh, the mayor set up a special meeting with a minister of the province, they have a meeting on an issue that was important to this municipality. She missed it, she went and had dinner with her husband instead. Um, she, she was the chairman of a committee, and, uh, the, the session that dealt with, uh, what the subject of her committee was, she didn't go to that session. So I get a complaint, well, the same thing applies, I, uh, if, if you're lazy and you do nothing, you're not gonna get elected the next time, and it's a principle, so I'm not gonna do it. So I just, I dismissed those complaints, right? So you're on your roll with those things. We'll get into the ones where you're, where I do get, uh, um, upset, another one. One lady, uh, made a deputation for council on, um, fluoridation of water, this is a hot topic for a lot of people, and, uh, and she thinks it's a poison and shouldn't be in the water, and the engineers say, "Oh, no, we gotta have it in the water." And, uh, so she started out her, uh, I got a complaint from her because she was taken on by all the councillors at the podium. So I, uh, I fortunately had a video, and I understand you're, you're, I guess I'm being a bit of a bad. Um, so, uh, I looked at the video, and she started out her presentation saying, "You members of council have not done your homework, you have not read these reports," she did not do that, she did not do that. And I thought she, guys, she read this councillor gave as good as she got, as far as I was concerned, it was, you know, I, so I, I certainly wasn't going to, uh, find a principle that was, uh, gonna say that she has to respect everybody, um, so I dismissed that complaint as well. Now. Um, the code of conduct, um, must apply to members of local boards. I was surprised that the province made that mandatory, because volunteering is so important, and you don't wanna threaten these people, we don't, also, I have no teeth against them, because they don't get paid anything, I can't suspend any of their salary, but, uh, um, but, uh, they did it, I don't know why, um, in Mississauga, I was asked by council to prepare a code of conduct specifically for local boards, and I spent, um, six months doing it, and, uh, it was very complicated, I thought, there's two different kinds of local boards, there's an adjudicated board, and there's an advisory committee, and, uh, I had to have, so I had to do two extra codes, and I did this, and I trained all, all of the local board members, and never had, in five years, I've never had a complaint with local boards, so I was pretty crazy. So what I do in this, this sample code that I give to your staff, is I keep it simple. I just say, this code applies to every member, this code shall be applied to all members of local boards who are not members of council, with necessary modifications applied in the discretion of the integrity commission. So I'll, I'll decide whether it's adjudicated or, um, and, uh, I'm obviously not gonna be very heavy against, uh, board members, because you need, and, uh, um, but this is a very simple way of dealing with what I went through in Mississauga, um, was crazy and expensive. Now. Okay, so we're gonna get into the rules now, um, and these are the rules that I enforce. Um, the slides I use will be, um, probably from the sample code, it may be from your code, but don't worry about the wording now, worry about, just take the, uh, the, the concept of what I'm interested in looking at. So confidentiality is the first one, a member shall only be entitled, well, if you're in, it's very important when you go in closed session, um, that everybody feels free to speak their mind, because they know it's not gonna leave the walls of the room, uh, we know it's gonna stay there. You've gotta be able to be free to, to talk about those things, and you could do big damage to, uh, to the municipality by, uh, breaching confidentiality, there, if you may be looking at acquiring land, you may be, it may be, uh, maybe looking at firing a member of staff or something in closed, and they start talking about it, and it can be very damaging. Um, I've had some terrible disclosures, uh, one, um, this one member of council in a municipality always went into closed, he always had his, uh, his smartphone sitting on the desk beside him, and, uh, he, uh, I was recording the whole thing, and he went and, and he made the mistake of, uh, actually playing it for a developer that was involved in the application that council was talking about. So needless to say, I, I took three months' salary earlier from him, and enjoyed doing it, um, it's terrible. Um, another example is, uh, this real estate agent in this small town, um, they have, the town has a big park in the middle of, and, uh, every middle of August or middle of July or somewhere, um, they open it up to bikers the whole weekend. Bikers come from all over, and they go to this town. So this real estate agent, uh, made the mistake of writing a member to all members of council, writing, "No one." And, uh, saying, "Couldn't we have a more family-oriented, um, uh, event rather than invite the bikers in? Why don't we do this, why don't we do that?" And it's two or three pages, and of course, somebody on council leaked it to, uh, the bikers. And this fellow, um, probably his business was cut in half, anybody who listened to him got a visit by a biker. His wife, uh, his wife's business was, uh, was impacted, because she had clients, and, uh, they were visited by bikers. It's all part of it, so be very careful about saying anything, and I, I, I'm very strict if, uh, if you start, uh, talking about something that's, that's in camera, it's in camera for a reason, you shouldn't be, uh, yeah, it doesn't matter if you disclose it for your own personal benefit, don't disclose it under any circumstances, I'll still, still contrary to the code if you do that. Now, that's rule one, I got, I've got seven. Any questions up to this point? I guess, I guess on confidentiality, I should tell you, um, a member, I'm gonna read the, a member shall only be entitled to have access to information and possession of the town as relevant to that as we report councillor committee, or that is relevant to their roles as members of council. So staff will be very cooperative with you, staff will give you all sorts of information, but there may be some things you can't have. It might be personal information, it might be, uh, I don't know, something that's, uh, maybe, uh, something that's in draft, that might come to council or might not, uh, staff can refuse to give you that information, but, uh, for the most part, you're entitled to just about everything, as so long as it relates to your performance as a councillor, to your duties. Now, next rule is undue use of influence. Now, this could get a little complicated, and I'll tell you a couple of examples later, but, um, you are, uh, required, obviously, to use your influence for your constituents. So there's nothing wrong with using whatever influence you want to benefit, uh, your constituents. On the other hand, um, you're not entitled to, uh, use improper influence, and I guess that's the, uh, the, where is, why, where is it improper? Well, it's improper if you're benefiting yourself, um, to use your influence for that purpose, or, of course, yourself means also the family, and the wording that, uh, "No, no, I'm sure your status as a member of council improperly influenced the actions or decisions of staff or others at the private advantage of the member, or his or her family, employees or business associates." This clause that came out originally, used to have the word friends, and till, I was in a small town in eastern Ontario, and a councillor about the same size council as this one, said, "You know, my constituents, all my constituents are my friends. You know, like, here in the big city, you don't understand, these are all our friends." So I took out friends, and, uh, um, I've had it out for a number of years now, um, but there are, there are relationships that, uh, and I'll give you one example of a relationship where uh, they were friends, but they were very close friends, and, uh, very close, um, you shouldn't be, uh, using your influence as a benefit. What, what happened here is, this is a developer who built, started building a, a commercial building, ran out of financing, and then just put up hoarding, and just let it sit there as an eyesore. Staff spent years trying to get him to, to abolish it, and, uh, this councillor was doing everything in his power, both behind the scenes and at council, and talking to other members of council, to try and stop staff from requiring this, and it was, uh, it was just inappropriate, I thought. Turns out that they were lifelong friends, and, uh, the developer's daughter was living with his son, and, uh, so they were pretty close, and, uh, so I just, I, I did, uh, recommend a sanction against him, because I thought that that was inappropriate, and it's certainly something that staff was trying to do, which was, was appropriate and certainly needed. I had another example too, but. Okay, so, um, that's, any, any questions about, uh, undue use of influence? It's a pretty nebulous term, but, uh, using your influence on behalf of your constituents is what your job is all about, so don't be confused with that. Now, staff relations, and we talked a little bit about this, where you have no part to play in the changing of command of staff. So only council as a whole, no single member, including the mayor, has the authority to direct employees, approve budgets, policy, and such other matters most specifically authorized by council. And then, of course, um, malicious, you don't wanna be maliciously or falsely imputing professional or ethical reputation of any staff, so don't do it publicly. If you've got a problem with staff, you can go to, uh, the CIO and say, "I've got this problem, can you deal with it?" And she will do that as best she can, or she might say, "I don't agree with you." Um, worst-case scenario, if, uh, she doesn't, uh, perform for you, then you can, you can actually, uh, ask the clerk to call a closed session and, and have the chap with council, you can do all of that, but just don't do it in public. And, uh, and don't threaten them, you know, anyway, you, you know what I mean. I had one that was just, just unbelievable, um, I'll tell you the story. This is a lady councillor who went to a committee of adjustment hearing, and literally screamed at the top of her lungs at two members of the engineering department of this city, um, for persecuting this poor lady, who was the applicant in this, in this committee of adjustment hearing. And, and this was an experienced councillor, and she just lost her cool, and, of course, the two staff members complained to me, and the two staff members, uh, supervisor joined in the complaint to me, and, uh, here's the story. Um, well, I always advise people, never get involved in a neighbor fight. You have two neighbors across the fence, never get involved, because it's very rare, one of them is a saint and one of them is, uh, villain, right? It doesn't work that way, it's kind of, it starts small, few words here, then builds, and builds, and builds. So what happened is, this, uh, was a lady, a neighbor, a man, a neighbor of a lady, and there's a fence between them. And, uh, uh, the lady complained about something, I guess it was noise or something in the backyard or whatever. This guy got a, uh, got a visit from the biolog enforcement department, I guess he got a warning, and, um, was it? But it was his turn to reciprocate, so he had a survey, I mean, he knew the law. He had a survey that showed her step encroached on a road elements, and her side yard setback was six inches short. And she said, and he went to staff for the survey, and he said, "I want this fixed." And of course, staff would love to look the other way, I mean, there's so many biolog infractions all over the place, and so many encroachments, they don't wanna do, because they don't have time for this, but here's a guy who knows the law, insists, and so she had to go to the committee of adjustment, hire a lawyer, pay fees, she had to do the encroaching agreement, pay fees, and this lady went nuts. So the staff were in the right, now, what I did on this one, I didn't, uh, I was going to impose sanctions on her, but staff agreed to, uh, accept, uh, an apology, a written apology, um, read in council, and I had to negotiate the wording, I had to actually, I had the councillor draft the wording, and I changed it, and back and forth anyway, so that was resolved by, by apology. So that's sometimes how it happens. Okay, now. Now, the next one is yes. And I don't, like, um, the, the key words are the first paragraph, "No member shall accept a gift or personal benefit that is connected directly or indirectly with the performance of their duties, unless authorized by one of the exceptions below." So, um, if it's connected with your duties, don't accept, um, uh, if it's a mug, a twenty-dollar mug, you don't refuse it, because you don't wanna embarrass yourself, um, if it's something small, but, but if it's a, if it's a, uh, a valuable gift that somebody offers you, certainly if it's obvious that it's just, it's in exchange for a bolt that you're gonna thank, then, uh, don't, don't accept that gift, because you're exposed. Now, the, the exceptions, gifts received, it's a protocol or social obligation, these are things that, uh, that happen in functions from time to time, and if it's a small item, don't worry about it. Services provided by compensation by persons volunteering their time, I'm sure during elections, you have all sorts of people volunteering their time, and, um, there's nothing wrong with that. Um, a suitable momentum of a function with nominal value honoring the members of the town. Now, here's, uh, what about a developer inviting you to lunch? And, and I always say, "Well, it is your obligation, and not just a developer, somebody wants something from the town." And he said, "Let's go and have, let's go and talk about it at lunch." Well, I, that doesn't bother me, if you go to lunch once, if you do it, awesome. Um, if you do it too many times, then I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be unhappy with that. But sometimes you wanna take a developer, find out, uh, you know, what he's up to, and, uh, maybe you wanna schmooze him at lunch, and, uh, if he pays for it, that's okay, once, uh, maybe twice, an unusual circus, but don't do it. Maybe twice, an unusual circus, but don't do it all the time. Don't be known as this person always votes for this developer in council. Don't do that. If somebody, the other thing, somebody invites you to a banquet, and it's, I think it's a hundred dollars, whatever. I, I don't come down on your heart for that. I was in-house city solicitor for a few years of my career and I was expected to go to these banquets. My God, the chicken is rubber, the speeches are boring. I don't regard them as perks, okay? That's for sure. And, and you get home at eleven o'clock in the middle of the week, every time. US councillors may feel obligated to do that. If somebody else pays for it, I'm not going to worry about it. But just be careful that you don't benefit the developer or a contractor. Now, a contractor, be careful about contractors because, because they may be going through a process with your purchasing department. There may be a tender out there, there may be an RFP, whatever. You have no part to play in that process except to take a staff recommendation and approve it or reject it. But you don't play any part in that. But still, be careful about contractors. You can talk to contractors, but not if they have contracts they're trying to get into the city. Time on your case. Okay, now. I'm going to try to, I'm going to try to get this done, let it break. The other thing about gifts is if somebody has something big that they want to give you, you could always accept it on behalf of the town. And it's, it's the town's property. Make sure you go to the property, whoever is responsible for property in the town and do something in writing to say, "This belongs to the town. I've accepted it on behalf of the town." That's okay, you know? So that's always an option, I'll, I'll answer you. Okay, now, rule number five. Use of town property. Now, I don't really find that this is a problem very often. You're obviously not going to get your grass cut by a town mower or whatever, but you're not going to use town, but you can use, obviously, any property that you use as a councillor. You may have policies that deal with cell phones. I don't know whether it contributes to your cellphone and you use it personally and you use it for town business. I don't know what, what those rules are, but, but make sure you comply with whatever policies that have been approved by council. And certainly in elections, be very careful about using town property. The important thing in elections is that, that you have to, you try to achieve a level playing field. You don't want to have, just because you're an incumbent, you don't want to be, you know, having a meeting in the town hall inviting, you have to be very careful about letting on that you're the one to vote for because you're already connected with the town. So be careful there. Okay, so, any questions after this point? Yes, ma'am.
I have one. In Espinola, they have a policy where seniors can ask for snow falling on their sidewalks, I believe it is. So as a councillor, would I be in conflict if I were to ask for that?
For one, you mean, one senior?
They do it in the winter time, all winter. Like, I think it's the sidewalks that they, seniors will, will shovel after the doorway.
The town will do that one and show?
Yeah, seniors are buying.
Okay, so it's an application. No, you can, you can support that. I mean, you can.
I could apply for it as a senior?
Oh, sure, sure. I mean, you just have the same rights as anybody else. I don't, I don't see that as a conflict.
Okay.
Unless you're not entitled to it for some reason, then you get it anyway.
She wants a double wash.
Madam mayor.
We have a number of different organizations, like craft fairs or bake sales or those kinds of things. If someone was involved in an organization that was organizing, say, a craft sale or a bake sale, and they, could they use town property for something like that if they were going to be a vendor in that or the organizer in some of these?
Where's the money go? To a charity or something?
Usually, often. Sometimes people, like, people that are vendors and those types of things will, will be vendors to pocket the money.
Uh-huh.
So I'd say, like, we have a fiber arts festival.
No, I think that's up to council. I don't, I don't say, I don't say anything wrong in that.
So if someone was a vendor in somebody, somebody else that somebody else organized, they could be there, they're just, you know, and as?
Well, you can, you can always say, "The people who pocketed the money, they have to pay some rent for the booth or something." But, you know, I think that's up to council. I don't see that as very, but you're talking about you going to staff and saying, "This person wants to hold a bake sale. They want to hold it on such and such a place owned by the, owned by the town." And I think you should let them do it.
No, it was more like, "I want to hold a bake sale and I want to do it at the, the library. And I want to invite four other people and they're all going to do crafts and it's going to support the fiber arts festival eventually, but I'm going to be helping my group for bake sales."
Is it going to come to council? If there's no, if there's no policy, staff is going to say, "Well, gee, I have to go to council."
Right.
So you have to have a policy for that.
Okay.
Otherwise, council has to approve.
Okay.
Right? Anyone else? Okay, so this is the sixth one, harassment. I told you the story about, about the lady and fluoridation and I, you know, it's a vigorous debate at a council meeting is, is important for democracy. I've seen some very vigorous debates and I've seen some pretty rude comments. So I take that into consideration if ever I get a complaint from someone about, about harassment. And obviously, you're not going to, you know, break the race ancestry, place of origin, color, ethnic origin, that's not, that's not something that, obviously, if you do that, you're in trouble. But there is a, sort of, levels of harassment, there's a line you can cross. I had a deputy mayor who hated the mayor, a small town, small township. And I warned her about one council meeting where she took him on and she was a bit of a pit bull. And finally, she, she, in a council meeting, she called the mayor dirty because he had a meeting with one side of an issue and didn't meet with the other side of the issue. So they, I, I thought that was crossing the line and I did recommend that she lose some salary. Now, we're going to come to rule number seven, which is social media. I, you know, social media is becoming so important now. I don't know whether any of you use it, whether any of you, I, I'm not a member of Facebook. I'm there, I get thousands of, interfere with my life. But in elections, certainly, most councillors are using Facebook and Twitter and all the rest of them to, to convey municipal information to their, to their constituents and also to tell them what a wonderful person they are. And, and so if you, if you are maintaining a Facebook page or whatever as a municipal service that you feel you can give to your constituents and tell them information about things happening, there's nothing wrong with that. And there's no difference between that and an email, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, you're not going to say something that is dishonest, untrue, offensive, disrespectful or constitutes harassment or is defiling, you're not going to say that in either an email or on Facebook. There's one little thing I learned recently that is, if you're using it as a municipal service yourself and somebody gets, you know, crazy, starts posting things on your page that is abusive or untrue or stupid, don't block them. What you do is you mute them. Because you don't want, you don't want to cut them off from information, from your information in your, in your municipality. But on the other hand, you won't be able to post anymore, so you don't have to listen to that. So that's a little trick that I've had people complain about being blocked on Facebook pages, et cetera. And the secret, the answer is just mute. So the basics in this rule is you adhere to all your town policies and guidelines. Some municipalities have passed policies on social media. I don't think it's necessary, but some people have done it. And don't have a cover, don't disguise your name and be on Facebook or one of these social media sites that's using a false name. Other than that, that's, that's it for, for social media. Any, any questions about these seven provisions in the Code of Conduct? It seems to me that none of these rules are going to cause you a problem. I don't really believe anything is. If you apply what you learned at your mother's knee, you're not going to get any problems. It's just morality and politeness that's required and a few little things that are special for municipal. So I want to get quickly into the complaint process now. This is where I get complaints. And the role of the integrity commissioner in, in most codes of conduct, sort of quotes the act and it's probably, probably twelve paragraphs. I just put in the ones here that authorize me to give you advice because I think that's the most important. A phone call to me or an email to me, I will respond to it immediately and you can rely on the advice I give it because it's binding on me. Now, if you're looking for advice from me, be careful about the way you regard me because I'm not your solicitor. I, I'm the integrity commissioner, I have no solicitor client relationship with you. Don't tell me you've done something bad. Tell me if you're about to do something and you want to know if, if I regard it as bad, but don't tell me you did something that is contrary to the Code of Conduct because I report to council. And I'm probably going to have to report that fact to council. I had a lady tell me, volunteer, that she, she received six hundred dollars worth of hockey tickets from the biggest developer in town, but she didn't use them, she gave them to her daughter and her daughter couldn't use it, so her daughter gave it to a friend. And I said, "Whoa, that's not appropriate." And so I did a report, docked her salary by six hundred dollars. But, of course, it being made public was not very beneficial to her as a councillor. So don't, don't regard me as your solicitor. I am the integrity commissioner and, and I'm a lawyer of many years standing, so my advice is probably correct, but be careful about telling me bad things. Now. The complaint process. Complaint that a member has conformed code may be issued by any person, any member of council or by council as follows. Make the complaint in writing, send it directly to the integrity commissioner, that's important. You don't want the clerk involved unless I involve her. For example, if one councillor complains about another councillor and I receive it from the clerk and then I, I serve the respondent councillor with that complaint, the respondent councillor is going to go to the clerk and say, "You knew about this and you didn't tell me." So she's got a complaint. She's in the middle of two councillors fighting each other and she doesn't want any part of it. So it comes to me, send it by, I prefer email, which you can send any way you want. And I will deal with that very expeditiously as I do most things. Now, a complaint must be signed and dated by a complainant who shall be an identifiable individual. I don't take complaints from groups, I take them from individuals. Now, this is where I don't investigate. If, if it's a criminal matter, I suggest to the complainant that they report it to the police. I'm not going to investigate a criminal matter. If it's freedom of information, I assume you're the head?
That's Cynthia's.
Cynthia's the head, so obviously you deal with Cynthia. If it's municipal elections act, you're going to have that one. So I'm not going to do an investigation if your complaint relates to those three things. That used to include municipal conflict interest act, it doesn't anymore because I have jurisdiction now in that area. A complaint, I, I accept complaints that are anonymous, which some councillors have trouble with. I don't accept, I, I, first of all, I have to approve the complaint as, as being capable of being anonymous because some complaints are, you know, you can't do an investigation. And I have a witness in and say, he, he says that he, he harassed so-and-so, but I can't tell you the name of so-and-so, et cetera, et cetera. It's going to come out if there's two people fighting each other, it's going to come out. Or sometimes it's already out in the press. So, but sometimes I will accept an anonymous complaint. And I, I will send the complaint to the councillor, but redact the name out and I'll do it on that basis. So, just so you know. This is where I can dismiss complaints. If the integrity commissioners have the opinion that the complaint is frivolous or vexatious or is not made in good faith, or there are no grounds or insufficient grounds for conducting an investigation, the integrity commissioner may choose not to investigate and may dispose of the complaint in summary matter. And as I said earlier, I, probably fifty percent of the complaints I receive, this is the way I do it because a lot of confusion and complaints against staff, which I have no jurisdiction over and all sorts of things. So there's some, there's some crazies out there I've learned in my eleven years. So sometimes they don't make any sense. I can tell you stories about that, but I won't. Okay, so. The other thing I don't do is if I get a complaint that's invalid against you as a councillor and I say, "On its face, it's invalid, it has no merit," and I dismiss it, I don't tell you. I, I, I'm required to preserve secrecy and required to keep everything confidential and I don't believe it's a benefit to you to know that, that so-and-so complained against you. I don't want to give a platform to these people and I don't want to get you all upset because somebody's complained about you. I just keep it to myself. And some councillors have a problem with that. If, if there's a reason for me to tell you about it, I will. I've had councillors tell me that... I've had counselors tell me that they need to know about sort of a systemic operation by this one person against this counselor, and this was doing it in many ways, including complaints to me. And I was persuaded to, yes, to tell them who the complaint is. So occasionally I'll do that. But generally speaking, you don't want to hear from me. You don't want me back here ever again, if you could possibly avoid it by which means it's, you don't want it to happen. And I'm happy not to go back. So that's the way we should. Now, the other thing I make sure of is if I'm going to do a report to council, I always have one, give the counselor who's complained about one last shot at me. In other words, I don't give a copy, a draft copy of the report, because I find that it ends up in the press or it ends up on Facebook or something, or it's a one-sided story. But I do a detailed summary of the report I'm going to file and also the sanctions I'm going to recommend, whether it's salary or reprimand or whatever. You will know that ahead of time, and you and I can have a discussion about it. I have changed the report once where a counselor raised some arguments that I'd never heard before, and I did pull a report, actually. So it's just something you want to know in advance. And the other thing is that usually, I don't know what you do here, but you probably post your reports on your website at a certain time, and your local press is probably sitting there picking up anything, anything that's juicy as far as I'm concerned. I make sure that you have a copy of the report in advance of that. I don't want you getting a phone call saying, the integrity commissioner says you're bad and you don't know anything about it. So I make sure of that. And I do that with the clerk. The other penalties. These are the penalties. No, this is where I talk to you in advance of filing your report. We talked about that already. And there's your early notice of decision before finalizing your report, I'll give you that. And then, all right, so upon conclusion of the complaint investigation, integrity commissioner shall issue a report to council with findings, the investigation requires a finding, and ground where the court should contain detailed findings, any reprimand, sanctions, or any so on. And for final copy of the report, well, I've given you a little summary of that as well. So we're moving along through these slides right there. Here's the penalties. So these are penalties that I can recommend to council. I can't, I have no original jurisdiction. I can't tell the treasurer to suspend X dollars of salary. I can't do that. It has to be council makes that decision. So all I can do is report to council. So I don't have any original jurisdiction. When we get into the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, you'll find that the council really has no part to play in that. I make the decision, but I recommend to go to court. I don't recommend, I send it, I take it to court. That's what I do, I read in about. And I have to give notice to council about what I'm doing, but it's the court that I go to and talk about. So there's reprimands, suspension of probation for a maximum of 90 days. And the only way that anybody can oppose one of those penalties is if I recommend it. Council can't do that on their own. It has to be, it has to be a recommendation from me. Now, I can also recommend that a counselor or a committee member be removed from membership of a committee. Council has the power to do that. Removed as chair. There was a case in Toronto a few years ago, the late Mayor Ford, who took some contributions towards his football team, and the integrity commissioner made the mistake of saying, recommending the council order him to pay that money back to the developers that contributed. And the court said, council doesn't have the power to do that. So you don't have the power, you don't have the power to request a apology. You don't have the power to require somebody to return a gift. So, and I get around that by, I can do a report that says, apologize or lose 30 days pay, or give back the gift, or I'll take the value of the gift out of your salary. So I can do it, but you don't have the power to do it, because I could do it. If the integrity commissioner in Toronto had done that, instead of taking, ordering him to repay $935, she could have taken it out of the salary, and that's what she should have done. But we're all learning in this game.
I have one question. You said you were going to, for example, you would send a report to Paula, and that, so my question is, when Paula gets it before it comes to all of council, is Paula bound under confidentiality?
Yes.
So she cannot, for example, say anything to anyone else in the office?
Anybody under my direction is bound by the same, preserve secrecy is a rule in the Act, and everybody has to follow that.
Okay, I just wasn't sure. Thank you.
On the previous slide, you had the clerk gets a copy and the member gets a copy?
Of what?
Of the report.
The report? The, what happens is, I file it with the clerk. The clerk then deals with it, I guess, for the next council meeting, and with all the other reports that are going to council, and puts them on council.
Are you talking about a violation of Code of Conduct?
Yes.
Or a violation of harassment?
Well, either. I mean, harassment isn't a code of conduct. If I find that you violated the Code of Conduct, I'll file a report with the clerk. First, I'll talk to you, if you're the respondent, and tell you what I'm going to do. So you'll know about it verbally. Then I send it to clerk, but I make sure the clerk doesn't post it on the website until you have a copy of it first.
So if I'm charged with harassment, I should get a copy of that?
You'll get a copy of it before the press gets it. The clerk may have it, and she's required to keep it confidential until all reports come to council.
Are you saying that will go to the public?
It has to be public. All my reports are public.
Is that, is that with all deputy commissioners? What I'm referring to is, we went through this process last year, and there was three reports, I think, but the charges under the harassment, we weren't allowed to see them. Excuse me, we were allowed to see them, we couldn't keep them.
Was it in camera? Was there an in-camera meeting?
Yes.
I, I.
We had the book, I mean, it's 150 pages, but to have a copy of that as a person who was charged with harassment, I wasn't allowed to keep that. The council members weren't allowed to keep that. If we wanted to, this is what we're told. We wanted to read that, we'd have to do an in-camera with our solicitor at, you know, another time, because we were going through the process at that time.
The Act, the Act very simply says, any report to council prepared by an integrity commissioner must be available to public. So I don't, I think your integrity commissioner was violating the Act, if what you say is true.
Oh, it is true.
I'm sure it's true.
No, no, what I'm getting at is, I found it odd that we would, because the other one that's, you know, that was called violations of the Code of Conduct were public, but the ones called violations under Code of Conduct under harassment were considered private.
See, I think I read some of this, and I think it was because the integrity commissioner considered one as a complaint of the Code of Conduct, and one as a complaint under the workplace harassment policy. That's probably what happened.
Yeah, it was called harassment. So is that, is that different?
Well, I, the entire report would have been public if I was doing it.
Isn't the rules consistent? So you have a set of rules that every counselor should follow?
The Act says, any report the integrity commissioner files must be available to the public. I can't break that, in my opinion.
Well, that doesn't work out very well, then. Because there's another book equally as big as the first one, maybe a little larger with the harassment claim in it. I got the chance to see two pages of it, and that was it.
I don't, I don't understand that. If it was a, if it was a HR consultant and not an integrity commissioner, an HR consultant could do that. And maybe, maybe the integrity commissioner was thinking he or she was wearing different hats, but I can't see that. Lawyers disagree quite often.
Well, I disagree with that lawyer as well.
Okay, are we?
One more question then.
Okay.
One more question.
Yeah.
If we wanted to get that, have our hands on that book, how would we go about doing that?
What do you mean, book?
Well, it's a book, the charges that were laid, and, and they were investigated, and there was a, there was, it was written up. And it's quite large, and I think the lawyer had it last. There was a lawyer that had it. I just wonder how we get our hands.
It was the recommendations from the integrity commissioner on their harassment charges. That's the greatest.
Well, you have to go to court, I guess. I, you know, I don't know what the status is, but certainly if the integrity commissioner filed a report and refuses you, refuses it for you to see it, because you're, any member of the public can see it. So the integrity commissioner must have been thinking, I've got my HR hat on here, and I'm going to do an HR private thing, and I've got my integrity commissioner hat on here, and I'm going to do a public thing. I don't see how the integrity commissioner can do that.
Yeah, I can't either. I asked to see the book, like, I wanted to see it, but it was never sent to me, it was never answered either. The letter I wrote them was never answered, so.
My main question is, how do I know if I'm harassing someone?
Well, you know, all I can say is, it depends on the circumstances of each case, and, you know, there's a line you can cross, but certainly if you're, are you talking about counselor to counselor, or are you talking about counselor to public?
Counselor to staff.
To staff.
What I'm saying is, that's the, that's the weakness in the system.
No, I'm here, I'm here to make a decision. That's not weak. I'll make a decision. I told you, but the deputy mayor, the college mayor, 30.
I understand that, but say you're, you know, you talk about debate as the foundation of democracy, and we're debating, and we say something, it's relative to me, I don't feel perhaps harassing somebody, but someone takes it as harassment. But I don't know that, till you come, you know, till it hits you between the eyes, you're charged with harassment. So, you know, you try, okay, you try to adjust and say, okay, I, you know, I want my P's and Q's, or what your personality is, but you don't have, what I'm saying is, it's a long reach to go out here and do that, instead of saying, a person saying, you know, that bothers me, you're saying that, it affects me, I don't want you to say it that way, for example.
Well, you can defend yourself, it's just, I mean, it has to be up to, like, somebody to decide, and it's very hard to define, you know, how far you can go. I give a lot of latitude to a lot of counselors for saying things that aren't very nice, but there's a limit. And this deputy mayor, she had been warned already about.
Yeah, that would be an extreme case, and the cases you seem to give to us are extreme, obvious to me. The ones that aren't obvious are difficult ones.
Well, why didn't you tell me what you said? What you said, and all, or.
Well, no, I don't want to go through that crap again. We went through.
But I, you know, I can't comment, I can't define harassment.
You see, our understanding from the solicitor is that the rules have changed. For example, years ago, even the, I was given a reprimand and had to take harassment training. In harassment training, twice in that online training, it says, when you say something to a person who takes it as harassment, or.
Offensive.
Offensive, they should say, you know, that's offensive, or I don't like that tone, or whatever it is, so you can solve the problem right there. He says that doesn't exist anymore. So you don't even know, a person doesn't actually say anything except, I'll file with the integrity commissioner that that person is harassing. So you go, you carry through, and you don't even know if you're harassing them.
But you know, with video now, it gives you just about everything you need. I mean, it gives the integrity commissioner just about everything, in terms of whether he can, he decides whether it's harassment or not.
Why was that step taken out? Do you have any idea?
Why was, I don't know what he, he or she was talking about. I don't know what he or she was talking about. It might be a case that was decided, but I don't know. I don't know.
In most policies, workplace harassment, okay? So we work together, all of us work together, everybody, staff, council. So say I offended Bill, and Bill's, I kept offending Bill unintentionally, and Bill said, Bill has the right to say to me, would you please stop, yes, face to face, would you please stop doing that? I, he has that one opportunity to directly tell me not to do this. And if I continue, then that becomes harassment.
If it was unintentional, don't you think I would agree that it's unintentional?
Like, you don't know at the time, like, at the time of an argument, you don't know that that's, but if that one said person.
So what, if he complains to me, and you're telling me that it was unintentional, then I'm going to say, well, it was unintentional. I'm going to agree with you. It's just a judgment call. I can't define it any more directly than that. And I'm sorry you've been through all this, I, you know, I wasn't part of it, and I don't know what your, what the defense was. Okay, are you still moving along here? I'm almost finished. We're an hour and a half now, and I'm very close to the end now. All right, so we're going to get into Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. So an elector, a client right of the person's required to be carried out concerning alleged conviction in section five, five point one or five point two of the Act by a member of council or member of the local board. So this is, let's look at the section five. Where a member, either on his or her own behalf, or acting for or with or through another, as any particular interest, direct or indirect, in the matter, is present at the meeting of council or local board, where the matter is a subject of consideration, member shall, very important, prior to the consideration of the matter at the meeting, disclose the interests and general nature thereof, not take part in the discussion, and not in any way attempt to influence the vote. Now, there's also a section that talks about if you're not at the meeting, and something comes up, you can declare the conflict at the next meeting. I'll give you an example of where a mayor got in trouble. Not with me. I didn't require any sanction, but she got some bad advice from the clerk, I think. I'm not sure of that. Anyway, the, this mayor, this is a regional municipality that was prior to mine, and the mayor was being sued by something related directly to things, the things she said in the, in the regional, in the regional council meeting, and things she had done in the region. So it was clearly a regional matter. She was being sued for this by some person, and she went to the clerk and said, hey, this is totally related to regional business, and I want, I think the council should pay my legal fees. So the clerk said, okay, send me, get your lawyer to send me a lawyer. So the clerk said, okay, send me, I'll get your lawyer to send me a letter. And what I'll do is, I'll take that letter to council in camera. You have a conflict, you can't attend that meeting, and, and you can't take part in any discussion. But she failed to say, don't attempt in any way to influence the vote. So what she did, the clerk sent the mayor a draft resolution to recommending that legal fees be paid. She sent it to two of her buddies on council, and said, could you move this and could you second it? Well, that's influencing the vote, obviously. But she did it very unintentionally, and sort of in good faith, and she wasn't advised by the clerk to do it. So I had a complaint, and I said, yes, she did break the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, but I didn't recommend any sanctions against her. So, that's just an example of where you can get in trouble. So you have to be very careful. But remember, it has to be a pecuniary interest. And I have, I have a few problems with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. It says, family, for example, doesn't include siblings. So you could have a, your sister comes to council with a multimillion dollar contract, and you can vote for it, and you can influence the vote, and you can do all sorts of things, which I don't agree with. I think if, if, if that came along, certainly it's not contrary to the, to the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, but I find it contrary to the code of conduct and some use of influence, inappropriate use of influence, or something like that. So then you have to worry about, well, where do you draw the line? What about a cousin? What about this? What about that? So, again, it's very hard to define, but I certainly don't think, I think a sibling should be included in the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, and I did tell the province that, but they didn't agree with me for some reason.
I have a question. So if you felt that it was not an arms-length transaction, you as an individual did not believe that, and you failed then to, you knew that in your mind it was wrong, but you did not declare a conflict because the act didn't say it was a conflict.
You know, I don't understand. I, you know, you'll have to give me an example. Give me, can you give me?
So, oh, say I own a company, and I was putting in a bid on snow removal.
Yeah, okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
So I know this company, I'm part of a shareholder in this company. So therefore, it's not an arms-length transaction.
Well, it's not a question of arms-length. It's, you have a conflict as a member of council, if the matter comes to council.
If it comes to council, but if I had just have the voting rights, some voting rights in this company, would I not?
Still have a conflict.
I would still have.
Yeah. And, and understand that the municipal conflict, everybody thinks, oh, it's a horrible piece of legislation, and I'll be embarrassed, I declare conflict, et cetera, et cetera. The, the act is there to protect you, to, to influence you to run for council, when you own homes and own businesses in the community. It's important that council is made up of stakeholders, is made up of people with businesses, with homes, et cetera. So all you do is, all, all it says is declare conflict, and you're clean, right? Because they want you on council. They don't want a bunch of, you know, non-involved people on council. So that's what the purpose of the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act is. Don't be cocked, don't be ashamed of declaring a conflict as often as you can. And also, I always say that, when in doubt, declare conflict. The clerk sometimes gives me a problem with that, because sometimes she uses forum, but, but I, you know, seems to me that declaring a conflict, if you're in doubt, is not a bad idea.
So it doesn't have to be pecuniary?
No, that was my next point.
Okay, monetary is...
No. To be contrary to the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, it must be pecuniary. But I have some problems with personal conflicts, right? I mean, there are some things, in, in one municipality many years ago, my first municipality, a lady who was the chairman of a charity, it was grant time, you know, the municipality was giving free floor space and giving money to various places, various charities, and this lady came out, and she put herself on as a deputy county commissioner. She wanted more money, she said to the critic from their charity that she get bar market, and her husband was on council. And her husband sat there and argued for her, voted for her, and all the rest of it. And that's wrong. And it was, it's very embarrassing for the rest of the council, but he wasn't contrary to the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, because she wasn't paid.
Okay.
So there's no, no pecuniary interest as a, as a chairman of the, of the charity. So there are personal conflicts. I mean...
But you don't have to claim them, is what you're saying?
It's, it's a question, if you feel...
I mean, if you have any type of...
If you feel you can't be impartial on a, on a vote, declare a conflict. Now, the other problem with that is, I don't want to get too procedural by all of it, but very often, if you refuse to vote, not as required by the act, the clerk will record it as a negative vote.
Maybe, yes.
And, and I, you know, there's a section in the municipal act that, that gives rise to that, and I tried to get that out with the, with the province when they were going through this bill sixty-eight, and still they didn't take it out. But anyway, I, I just feel that there are times when you want to declare a conflict. Doesn't look good if you're voting for your sister on a major contract, you know? And, you know, this, this councillor, whose wife is in front of council asking for money, and he should have used his brain and, you know, done something. But there is no, no legal...
There's no provision for it?
No, no, no.
Now, if I declared a conflict, I know I would have to leave the table. Do I have to leave the room?
Well, I usually, usually, if it's a closed session, you have to leave the room, right? Because you don't want anybody thinking that you were, and you don't want to, you know, you might be making faces with somebody, or whatever. It's not a bad idea to leave the room when it's an open session, because you could be accused of, you know, making facial expressions or doing something, you know? So it's not a bad idea to leave. You're safer to leave. So as I said before, the bottom conclusion of an application investigation, and I, I do the investigation, I, I can hold a public meeting, if I hold a public meeting, I would do it through, through Paula. I wouldn't do a separate public meeting. I'm required to notify council as to what I'm up to, whether I decide to go to court or not. But the council has no part to play in this investigation that I'm doing. I decide whether to go to court or not, and the court, of course, I still have no original jurisdiction to take somebody off council, but the court does. And so that's, and that's a real download by the, by the province. I guess the feeling is that the reason people don't get taken to court is because it's so expensive. So they've transferred the cost over to the municipality. So if I take, if I take somebody to court to one of my clients, it's, I'm not going to use a cheap lawyer, I'm going to use the best lawyer I know. It's my case, not yours, and it's going to be very expensive, so I am concerned about that. No, it hasn't happened yet, it may never happen, but that's... So that's it. I'm, I'm done. And I'll be happy to answer any questions, either here or later on in camera. Yes?
All right. I was talking to someone who was on the separate school board, and they were talking about conflict of interest. And he was saying there, he was surprised at how far it goes. Let's say, for example, I live along Highway Six, and Highway Six needs to be paid, okay? So it comes up, and we've got a client, we went out, we get council, we went out and got bids, and now we're voting on whether to accept shoes in the bidder to do the work.
Sure.
If I live right next to Highway Six, I better not vote on that, because that's conflict of interest, because it's my property values.
That's taking it too far.
Yeah.
Okay. I was surprised when I heard that. All those people running on the highway, it's a matter of general application, applies to so many, such a large group. Now, if it's a small group, in other words, I don't know, rezoning next door to you, that's obviously going to increase the value of your property or something of that sort, you may want to declare conflict. But it's all, again, it's a question of the facts of each case.
It would be the same as raising taxes. We all pay taxes.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's, it's a general aspect.
Oh, yeah.
Taxes themselves.
Yeah, sure, that's...
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to just qualify ourselves.
That's right.
I was surprised when I heard that. I thought, I was getting a little bit crazy.
I've had, I've had developers who were on council, a developer who had an interest in a development company was on council, and the developer's charges came along, and he declared a conflict, because, you know, it would benefit him, the date, if the date was put out here, it would benefit him, because he had something, the developers, I mean... So, I mean, it does, you have to be a little bit careful. And you'll know. I mean, you don't really need my, you'll know when you have to declare a conflict. And as I say, I'm very reasonable, I'm not to come down on him unless you do something really, really terrible. And you heard my story with this mayor, obviously, they broke the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, and I recommended that she not be penalized.
Okay, I have one question then. On the last one there with your investigations, so say a member, you were taking them, going to take them to court, okay?
Yeah.
So the town then is paying your legal fees?
Paying, well, I've got a litigation lawyer, so I would hire a litigation lawyer. I would be involved, they're also paying my, my time, yeah.
And the town would pay the lawyer's fees?
That's right.
And therefore, the member of council will say, they would have to get their own lawyers, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just following you.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And I have to, I have to advise the, the various people who are going to court, and I have to advise them, he would have to get a lawyer, and, but it's my decision whether I go to court or not.
Yeah, and, and it's just for clarification. So if we have ABC as a town lawyer, that is not the lawyer that would represent the member of council?
No, no, he can't. He has a conflict. And in any District of Interest Act, problem that you have, pretty much all staff would probably have a conflict. I'm here now, and I can, I can advise you. But don't tell me you did something bad.
No.
Ask me if you can do something in the future. Well, thank you. Do you want to go in camera? Is that what you want to do?
Uh, yeah. We have a motion to go into camera. It has been moved by Counselor Bigley, seconded by Counselor Foster. We have resolved that under section twenty-six point one point three of law number twenty-sixty-two oh eight. Counselor Moes went in the camera session for proceeding in section two...